Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, October 18th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers, and we do invite the public to join us and participate in council proceedings. For those of you unable to attend, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. We are just shy of a quorum. It is 10:15. We have seven members present as we await the arrival of additional colleagues. This being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of presentations and special introductions to be made. Let us begin today's meeting by recognizing our colleague, Councilmember Tom LaBange.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of Council and staff in the distinguished group we have in the chambers this morning. I have the pleasure of introducing you one of the great citizens of Los Angeles who came from Cleveland, Ohio to Los Angeles several years ago and ended up in the Los Feliz District and has one of the finest restaurants in all of the Los Feliz District. I want to salute Carl Ferraro today on his 89th birthday. Carl was born on October 18th in 1913 in Ashland, Wisconsin, and then lived in Michigan until his 18th year. Then he moved to Cleveland, Ohio where he met his beautiful wife Sarah and created a marriage on June 24th, 1939. He began his illustrious restaurant career as an owner of the Heights Tavern in Cleveland. And in 1951, Carl left Cleveland with his wife and her three sons, Carl Junior, James, and Douglas, to move to the Los Feliz District of the wonderful city of Los Angeles. Then Carl began their great career at the Dresden Restaurant on Vermont in 1954 and been there nearly 50 years. The Ferraros have established Dresden as a terrific restaurant and a Hollywood landmark. He has always proven himself to be a great citizen of our community, involved with the Los Feliz area and improving that district and that special district that it is. And he has proven himself to be a great citizen of all of the city of Los Angeles and of the fourth district. So I'm proud today to call together Carl and his wonderful family here at the City Hall of Los Angeles to salute him on his 89th year, which has been filled with success, love, and joy because he brings it to many people, his family, all the patrons of his restaurant and his neighborhood. And we salute him with this special commendation. It was a little surprise, but we wanted to surprise someone who never surprises anybody because he's always top flight, 1,000 percent. Please salute Carl Ferraro on his 89th birthday here. There you go, Carl. There you go, right there. Congratulations. And I love the story about Carl because when you come from another place, although I've been born in Los Angeles and raised in Los Angeles, but when you come from Cleveland in the 1950s, you were part of a great migration of people from the Midwest to Los Angeles and established themselves. And as we know, and one funny, Ed Reyes, I was in your district this morning in Chinatown and saw the sign, New Chinatown. Old Chinatown was where Union Station was, and Little Italy was Broadway, where Little Joe's was, Little Italy. And then Little Italy moved up really to the Los Feliz District, which was that, and now it's a very hipster district, which is okay. Everybody enjoys it. But I wanted to salute the Ferraro family. There are no relations to the late, great John Ferraro, but they were dear friends over the years. Now, for a few words, I got to call on Douglas Ferraro, who's the youngest boy who's never lost for words.
That is completely unexpected. It's an honor to be here in front of the Council of the city of Los Angeles. Our relationship as a family goes back long ways with the LaBange family, went to school with various LaBanges. We have a dear relationship with Tom's dear mother, whom we love very, very much, who is now with her husband in heaven. And so it's a great privilege for us as the Ferraros, together with the LaBanges, to be contributors to the city of Los Angeles and to be here on this very special day for the city and for our own personal family and to collectively wish a very happy birthday to our father and a great man, our dad Carl Ferraro.
Well, there's not much more that I can say. I think Mr. LaBange has said everything about me. So all I can say is thank you very much and thank you for accepting me. Thank you. It beats the winners in Cleveland, doesn't it? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to take a picture right here. We still got short members? Come over here. We're going to go over here and take a picture in the back room. Sit over here. All right, Christine, come here. I can still go to two? Okay, good. Here we go. Christine, ready right here? Everybody here? You got the significant? Good. Wuhan? Wuhan? Mr. President, members of Council, from time to time, we have distinguished delegations that here at the city of Los Angeles, we've not only had a delegation, we've had great students here. And from the Wahoo China Advanced Business Executive Program is being honored this morning because they've completed their work here in Los Angeles. One of the great things about the People's Republic of China is they are very intelligent where they send their best and brightest mid managers to California state schools, whether it's Northridge or whether it's LA State or Long Beach State, but they're here this morning. We're going to recognize them. And I'm going to ask Christine Chin, who's been an intern for my office, and Ron Deaton, pay attention, Ron Deaton. Christine Chin runs... She runs the stadium. She runs the stadium in her town in China, 60,000 seat stadium, Mark. She wanted to meet with our people to learn how we could get pro football in China. So Christine, for a few remarks, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. Thank you, President, and thank you all, Councilmembers. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I'm so pleased of you having me here, expressing my heartfelt gratitude on behalf of my delegation to Mayor Han, to City Floor, and Councilmember Tom LaBange yourself. Thanks for offering us the very precious opportunity to work with City Hall in Mayor's volunteer crops and the various agencies in LA. Ladies and gentlemen, a city with 3,500 years' history arising from a region whose symbol is that of the phoenix, an area of 48, 84 square kilometers and with a population of over 7.4 million and a dynamic metropolitan integrating ancient and modern, this is the city of Wuhan, China, the strategic partnership city of LA. And our group here of 22 visiting public and business administration delegation came all the way here for six months, taking executive MBA program at Cal State LA and interning with various agencies in LA. And people say, "Don't die without seeing Naples." I heard a new one. You won't understand developments in the world economy without seeing Los Angeles." So, so from Peking Airport, we headed straight to LAX. Seeing truly is believing. Six months in LA have proven fruitful and productive. Today, we would like to say thanks to the city of LA. Thank you for providing us precious experience and understanding American business practice, observing US organizational culture in local business, public, and nonprofit organizations, getting to know your history, culture, and people. I have no doubt that the past six months will be a great part in our career, enriching our lives all the time. So we will bring what we have learned and experienced home to make a greater contribution to our country and our people. But before we go, please do accept our deepest gratitude to the city of LA and the best wishes to all your people. So before handing over the microphone, I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Zhang Xia, the head of our delegation to all of you. Mr. Zhang, please. Honorable Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. This is more than a privilege for us to be awarded this honor along with all my colleagues in Wuhan delegation. We'd like to share with you our happiness and excitement to be here today in Council Chambers. Please, I'm on behalf of all my colleagues to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Los Angeles City Council, who have made the greatest decision to promote friendship between China and the United States of America. I would also like to deliver special thanks to the Honorable Mayor Han, Councilmember Tom LaBange, Deputy Chief John Callahan, LAFD, Dr. Bai, Cal State University, LA, and Ms. Grace Corner, City Attorney's Office. Thanks you for... Our city of Wuhan salutes you all for your remarkable contribution leading to the strategic relationships between our two cities. The 22 members of our delegation come from a variety of public administration backgrounds from all sectors of municipal government. We are proud and pleased to have worked together promoting friendship and enhancing exchanges between our two cities. It's our great pleasure to offer continuing involvement and efforts towards bringing future development opportunities to our two communities. We are so delighted to have played a small part in bringing people in two countries closer and further enhancing strategic relationship between the city of Los Angeles and the city of Wuhan.
谢谢 Translate that. Best wishes for a long friendship between our two great cities. We would like to invite any member of Council or staff or mayor to come, like all of these 21 have come, and to learn from the best and brightest in China and their city. Thank you all very much. I have commendations. Please, all 21 rise and be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. And Dr. Christine Baugh, you've been selected to represent all of them, and we give you this certificate right here to salute you. Let's have a special welcome again and applause. 谢谢 Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. Welcome all of you members. We have achieved a quorum. Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden, before you go up there, let me take care of just a minute of council business here. Having achieved a quorum, I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Princeton Galanter Garcia-Gruo-Hahn, Holden LaBange, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla. Eleven members present, and a quorum...
I can still go to two? Okay, good, here we go. Christine, ready right here, everybody here? You got this? Good. Wuhan, Wuhan. Mr. President, members of council, from time to time, we have distinguished delegations that here at the City of Los Angeles, we've not only had a delegation, we've had great students here. And from the Wahoo China Advanced Business Executive Program is being honored this morning because they've completed their work here in Los Angeles. One of the great things about the People's Republic of China is they are very intelligent where they send their best and brightest mid managers to California state schools, whether it's Northridge, or whether it's LA State, or Long Beach State. But they're here this morning, we're going to recognize them. And I'm going to ask Christine Chin, who's been an intern for my office, and Ron Deaton, pay attention, Ron Deaton. Christine Chin runs, she runs the stadium. She runs the stadium in her town in China, 60,000 seat stadium, Mark. She wanted to meet with our people to learn how we could get pro football in China. So Christine, for a few remarks, please, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Mr. Councilmember, thank you, President, and thank you all, councilmembers. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I'm so pleased of you having me here, expressing my heartfelt gratitude on behalf of my delegation to Mayor Han, to City Hall, and Councilmember Tom LaBange yourself. Thanks for offering us the very precious opportunity to work with City Hall in Mayor's volunteer crops and various agencies in LA. Ladies and gentlemen, a city with 3,500 years' history arising from a region whose symbol is that of the Phoenix, an area of forty, eighty-four square kilometers, and with a population of over 7.4 million, and a dynamic metropolitan integrating ancient and modern, this is the city of Wuhan, China, the strategic partnership city of LA. And our group here of 22, a visiting public and business administration delegation came all the way here for six months, taking executive MBA program at Cal State LA, and interning with various agencies in LA. And people say, "Don't die without seeing Naples." I heard a new one. You won't understand developments in the world economy without seeing Los Angeles. So, so from Peking Airport, we headed straight to LAX. Seeing truly is believing. Six months in LA have proven fruitful and productive. Today, we would like to say thanks to the city of LA. Thank you for providing us precious experience, understanding American business practice, observing US organizational culture in local business, public, and nonprofit organizations, getting to know your history, culture, and the people. I have no doubt that the past six months will be a great part in our career, enriching our lives all the time. So we will bring what we have learned and experienced home to make a greater contribution to our country and our people. But before we go, please do accept our deepest gratitude to the city of LA, and the best wishes to all your people. So before handing over the microphone, I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Zhang Xia, the head of our delegation to all of you. Mr. Zhang, please. Honorable councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, good morning! This is more than a privilege for us to be awarded this honor, along with all my colleagues in Wuhan delegation, would like to share with you our happiness and excitement to be here today in council chambers. Please, I'm on behalf of all my colleagues to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Los Angeles City Council, who have made the greatest decision to promote friendship between China and the United States of America. I would also like to deliver special thanks to the honorable Mayor Han, Councilmember Tom LaBange, Deputy Chief John Callahan, LAFD, Dr. Bai, Cal State University, LA, and Ms. Grace Corner, City Attorney's Office. Thanks you for, our city of Wuhan salutes you all for your remarkable contribution leading to the strategic relationships between our two cities. The 22 members of our delegation come from a variety of public administration backgrounds from all sectors of municipal government. We are proud and pleased to have worked together promoting friendship and enhancing exchanges between our two cities. It's our great pleasure to offer continuing involvement and efforts towards bringing future development opportunities to our two communities. We are so delighted to have played a small part in bringing people in two countries closer and further enhancing strategic relationship between the city of Los Angeles and the city of Wuhan.
谢谢，translate that, best wishes for a long friendship between our two great cities. We would like to invite any member of council, or staff, or mayor, to come, like all of these 21 have come, and to learn from the best and brightest in China and their city. Thank you all very much, I have commendations, please all 21 rise and be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. And Dr. Christine Baugh, you've been selected to represent all of them, and we give you this certificate right here to salute you. Let's have a special welcome again and applause. 谢谢！ Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. Welcome all of you members. We have achieved a quorum. Mr. Holden, Mr. Holden, Mr. Holden, before you go up there, let me take care of just a minute of council business here. Having achieved a quorum, I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Galanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Han, Holden, LaBange, Ms. Skouski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, eleven members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, the council is officially in session. Members, unless there's a major objection, let's sweep through the agenda, call items special, whatever matters you can dispose of on consent, let's do that, and return to presentations, and end with items called special. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Skouski moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Item number one on the regular agenda is an item notice for public hearing.
Item number one now before us, I do not have request members of the public to address the council on this item. Is there any members wishing to call item one special? Item one special, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That being an ordinance carries over for a second reading.
October 25th. Items numbers two through six on the regular agenda are items which public hearings have been held. A motion is required on item number three.
Items two through six now before us, is there a motion from the floor on item three? Mr. Zine?
Special, please.
Item three special?
Yes.
Item three called special by Mr. Zine. On the balance of the items, members wishing to call any specials, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Item number two being an ordinance holds over for a second reading. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items numbers seven through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number seven is the commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk momentarily, and take up quickly items eight through 26. Any specials, members on items eight through 26? Item 20 called special by Ms. Gruehl. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes?
Continue 19, please.
Request to continue item 19 for how many days?
Tuesday.
Till Tuesday, which would be October 22nd. Is there an objection to that? Seeing none, item 19 is continued, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, for purpose of an amendment, I'll call 17J special and 22 special.
17J and 22 called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes?
Like to receive and file 17D as well.
17D?
D, yes.
D as Daniel, 17D, request to receive and file without objection.
Mr. President, I understand that Councilmember Perry wished to receive and file an item. Ms. Perry? Did you wish to receive and file item number 16?
Yes, please, thank you.
Item number?
16.
16, receive and file at the request of Ms. Perry without objection. Mr. Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those matters are approved. Items eight and nine being ordinances, do hold over for a second reading. Coming back to item number seven.
Mr. President, there is also two items on the continuation agenda, do you wish to take those?
That's suspend to 27 and 28.
27 and 28 are items on the continuation agenda.
Again, on these items, I do not have request members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are hereby satisfied. Any specials? Mr. Holden?
27 and 28, I think I recall that I requested they be held over, so on, special.
You want to call those special? Mr. Holden calls 27 and 28 special. Returning now to item number seven, Chair recognizes Ms. Skouski.
Mr. President, this is an appointment, the recommendation of our city attorney, Mr. Doug Adio, of Dr. Uri Hershur to the Ethics Commission. And we are going to recommend today that this be received and filed only as a consequence of a procedural difficulty, that because Dr. Hershur has been in Jerusalem for the last five weeks, he hadn't had the chance to fill out the economic disclosure forms and the others. So we are going to ask that this be received and filed today. We've already discussed with the city attorney that this will be resubmitted tomorrow. We will work with Dr. Hershur to have the appointment in committee the same morning it comes into council, with all the proper forms behind us, so that we can hopefully confirm this very, very stellar appointment. But I did want to say at this point, we're just going to receive and file this, so that it can come back with all the proper documentation.
Okay, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand there have been discussions about the procedures here, and so the procedures are going to run their course. But I'm pleased that Dr. Hershur was here this morning, and I think the reasons that the procedures haven't gotten to the stage that they should are extraordinarily explicable here and understandable. And I just want to move forward, because I think we would all greatly benefit from Dr. Hershur's service on this commission. It's such a stellar appointment by our city attorney, and I think we've waited long enough, so I look forward to getting the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, and to your service, which is going to be a credit to the city and to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, then item number seven is hereby received and filed. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That brings you back to the items called special.
Beginning with?
Item number three, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine? I think Mr. Zine is conferring with city staff, let's proceed to the next item.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holden?
Is it appropriate not to?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Returning now to presentations. Mr. Holden is next, followed by Mr. Ridley Thomas and Ms. Perry.
This is the mayor's office. Mr. President, members, this is a very historical day for the city of Los Angeles, and also for the nation, because we, it's Clean Water Day. And we're going to have clean water every day, and each day it'll get cleaner and cleaner because of the things that we will do to make that happen. It's a great day for the city of Los Angeles and its residents. Today, the mayor and the city council have joined together to proclaim October 18th, 2002, Clean Water Day in the city of Los Angeles. Thirty years ago, when the Federal Clean Water Act was signed into law, the city recognized the importance of working to conserve our waterways and enhance our environment for generations to come. Today, we're here to mark the work that has been done during those 30 years by the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation, and the city partners. That work includes the construction of a $1.6 billion high-piercing treatment plant. Since 1987, the plant has reduced the amount of pollution discharged by 90 percent. Tremendous achievement. We have also have the city's Tillman Water Reclamation Plant, and the beautiful Japanese garden where streams, trees, grass used recycle water that may have come from showers in Silmar or a tub in Tarzana. Reclaimed water is not only environmentally beneficial, last year reclaimed generated 922,000 for our city coffers. Community outreach is probably the most important work of the Bureau of Sanitation. Thousands of hours are logged with visits to schools, community meetings, and businesses. Educating, informing the public that trash, glass clippings, and motor oil in city storm drains is carried to the ocean and endangers wildlife and habitats. These are just some examples of the work the city of Los Angeles, and the many employees of the Department of Public Works, particularly the Bureau of Sanitation, has accomplished over the last 30 years. But the work is not finished. These are many challenges ahead, there are many challenges ahead of us, particularly in the area of urban runoff. We will reduce trash in the Los Angeles River by 6% by the year 2006. We will build 19 storm drain outlets along the Santa Monica Bay coastline, which will capture trash and divert polluted storm water. With the continued partnership of environmentalists, regulatory agencies, concerned citizens, and other municipalities, we will continue our efforts in meeting new goals, challenges, and regulatory requirements. Water is our most precious resource, and we will work to protect it. At this time, I'd like to recognize our environmental friends who are with us today, and I want them to stand, representatives from Santa Monica, Bay Keepers, Heal the Bay, Tree People, Friends of the Los Angeles River, including Mr. Reyes, Los Angeles San Gabriel River Watershed Council, Northeast Trees Hollywood Beautification Team, and the numerous city workers and everyone else who is here to support Clean Water Day. At this time, I'd like to call upon the mayor's representative for a few remarks.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable councilmembers and esteemed guests. My name is Todd McIntyre, I'm a policy analyst for the Honorable Mayor James Han, and today I am here to proclaim Friday, October 18th, 2002, Clean Water Day in the city of Los Angeles, celebrating the 30th anniversary, 30th year anniversary of the Clean Water Act of 1972. And we would like to just recognize all the efforts and the great strides that have been made by the Board and Departments of Public Works, especially the Bureau of Sanitation, along with our mayor and other elected officials within the city. We'd also like to thank all of the organizations that have partnered with us in making these great strides, and the outside governmental agencies that have been our partners as well. Thank you very much.
And I work in, representing the Board of Public Works so ably doing that job is Adriana Rubikova.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. It's always a pleasure to be back in council chambers. I just would like to reiterate Councilmember Holden's comments. We do have many challenges in the future, we look forward to working with our partners, and we will continue to work hard to not only have clean water in the city of Los Angeles, but to provide clean streets to our residents here in the city for all of you. Thank you again.
I would like to mention to all of you that the Bureau of Sanitation has a wonderful display in the rotunda, where you can find more program information, and how to get the Grease Avenger, I'll present it, Grease Avenger to visit schools. Let's get a short, a shot of the Grease Avenger, and I want him to come down here while I present this proclamation to the Ms. Rubikova and to the Grease Avenger. Oh, here you are, right here. All right.
Great.
Thank you, Councilman Holden, thanks to everybody. You know, one of the things that the city of Los Angeles, the Bureau of Sanitation, the Board of Public Works committed to is keeping our waters clean, and one of the biggest challenges that we have is grease blockages and sewers that causes overflows, and we are really making strides in reducing overflows that will improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods. We are going, we go to schools, we go to neighborhoods to help, ask the community to help us keep grease out of the sewers, and that's just an example of the many things that we have done. So we have some buttons, we have brochures, wear the buttons proudly, because this is an example of the many things that we are all doing in the city of Los Angeles to help our neighborhoods and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grease Avenger. What the Grease Avenger is saying is that the public can really go a long ways to help us clean up our waterways. Education is the number one effort, and that is, children do not dump the grease down the catch basin. Parents do not dump the grease down the trash basin, and also take those hamburger wrappers and put them into the trash can. Thank you very much.
I believe Mr. Garcetti has a few words for the Grease Avenger.
I just wanted to thank the Grease Avenger. You're an inspiration to young people throughout this city and around the world. Thank you, Grease Avenger, but we are all asking today, who is that man behind the mask?
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. There's one of our esteemed retirees from the CIA's office coming to visit at us again. Cindy recognizes him. Mr. President, members of the council, may I please have your attention for this very special presentation? A member of the city family is retiring today after four decades of service. And I speak of none other than James Etta Adams. And she's here, and I want to invite her forward, so we can come forward to have her And we're going to ask the one and only Bob Adams to join her, her husband. Give Bob a big round of applause, we all recognize him. She's been working for the city since 1970, and she began her career in the Los Angeles area, in the Los Angeles Unified School District, as a teacher at Ritter Elementary School. In 1971, she moved to the city's Community Development Department, where she worked for eight years as a program specialist. There she supervised staff in the overall planning, negotiating, developing, and implementing of human services programs. During the next decade, Ms. Adams served as an administrative coordinator for the mayor's Criminal Justice Planning Office, where she was responsible for program development, contract execution, and federal grants management activities. Ms. Adams served as the acting liaison for former Mayor Tom Bradley, as a member of the Los Angeles County Interagency Gang Violence Task Force. Over the years, she has been the editor of two newsletters, Gang News Watch and Focus. They are focused on providing information about the city's efforts to suppress gang activities and domestic violence. So now, after some 32 years, James Etta Adams is retiring. So please join me in thanking her for her dedicated service that she's provided the city of Los Angeles. As we present her this resolution, which reads now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend James Etta Adams for her outstanding commitment and 32 years of dedicated service to the Los Angeles Housing Department, and the city of Los Angeles, and the other services in our city which she has provided. We extend to you our very best wishes for a long and happy retirement.
Ms. Gruehl?
I wanted to, before James Etta speaks, to also add my congratulations. I've known James Etta since I was about 18 years old, which, as I always say, is only a few years ago. But James Etta really has been a dedicated city employee, and as Mark Ridley Thomas mentioned, your many accomplishments in various departments in the city, and your contribution through the mayor's office, I just want to similarly say thank you. You don't look old enough to have been that many years in the city of Los Angeles, and that you're really a treasure, and I know you and Bobby will continue to still be active, whether you are employed with the city, you're still part of the city family. So congratulations on your retirement, and try and enjoy it just a little bit, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. To my councilman, Mr. Mark Ridley Thomas, and to the council, I am deeply honored by this recognition, and I also thank God for allowing me this opportunity in this point of my life to be in good health and to be joined by my husband, Bob Adams, who is also retired. My 30-plus years with the city have been a very rewarding experience, and I thank you again for this acknowledgement and recognition for which I am highly honored. Thank you.
Here we call Bob was a member of the Los Angeles Police Department for, how many years, Bob? 28 years. He's a retired police officer, and we appreciate him. He was even kind enough to serve on my staff for a little while and tried to help on this issue of nuisance abatement as well as criminal activity. So he's made a contribution of consequence. So between the two of them, it's over 50-plus years of dedicated service to the City of Los Angeles, and I think they deserve another round of applause for that. May I now make this special presentation to my colleague, Mr. Reyes, if he would come forward. This is the Honorable Ed Reyes, representing the First District of the City of Los Angeles. The nonprofit real estate company known as the Community of Friends has been serving the mental health community for some time now, and for the past seven years, this organization has been well-served and led by its chief executive officer, Monique Lachey. And I'm going to ask her if she would join us at the podium at this time. Will you, will you receive her, please? Monique? She is leaving a community of friends after a decade of service, and both Mr. Reyes and I have worked with her during our respective tenures on the city council in projects in both CD-8 and CD-1. And let me just say, there are two housing projects that immediately come to mind that I want to reference, and I'm sure Mr. Reyes will do likewise. 39 West, a $3.3 million project at Martin Luther King and 39th, and with 30 units of affordable housing for special needs adults. This was the site, 39th and Western. Mr. Holden, you'll recall, was the site known as Ray's Kitchen, and when Mr. Zine was a police officer in 77th, he no doubt had an opportunity to find himself there for breakfast with indescribably delicious biscuits and gravy and a number of other things that would cause us to adjourn council and find our way there, only to find that it is no longer there, it is now 39 West, an exceptional affordable housing project done by a community of friends. And then, this Figueroa Court, a $4 million project located at Figueroa and 91st Street that offers 40 units for special needs adults. Both of these housing projects offer a design-sensitive living arrangement, social service, and social networks to enhance the quality of life for those adults with some sort of mental illness or physical disability. Ms. Lachey has established a community of friends as a leader in the field of service-enriched housing. Under her guidance, more than $78 million in housing projects have now been completed, with another $40 million in the pipeline. And again, one of those projects, Santos Plaza, will be located in the Eighth Council District at 38th and Western. So it's my pleasure to thank Monique Lachey for her years of dedicated service to a community of friends and to the City of Los Angeles, and to wish her well as she moves on to a new vista, namely GH Capital, where she'll serve as Vice President of Acquisitions. I'll turn the podium over now to Mr. Reyes for comments, and then we'll present to Ms. Lachey. Sir?
Thank you, Councilmember Ridley Thomas, for the gracious introduction, but I must share with you that with Monique Lachey, we have incredible talent, because what they do is they go into areas that most people avoid, and they take on a challenge that requires being able to build consensus, not only with the elected officials, but with the bureaucrats of each department, and with the folks who are living in the community, which is the most important element. And working with Monique, it was easy to say yes, because they did their job. They prepared that area in such a way where we can give an easy and quick yes, but it takes preparation, it takes long hours of work. For example, in Westlake, the Maryland Apartments, they built 30 units, special needs. Beautiful building had fallen over the decades, they brought it back to life, and you go by there, you could just feel the way it was back when this neighborhood was being built. Brandon Apartments, 32 units, family units. Parker Hotel, 30 units, rehabilitation. The Hartford Family Project, which is for me the most exciting, because here we are challenging the school district to work with us, with the nonprofit, with the housing and the community, and see if we can interlock within one lot the needs of education and housing, and think differently. Think, as they say, out of the proverbial box, outside so that we can look at space so we don't have to displace people from their homes in order to build classrooms for our kids. And this will take creativity from the planning department's point of view, the housing department, the financial world, to see how we can add value to space for things that we truly need as we continue to grow as a city. So for that, I want to thank Monique Lachey for going to the edge, pushing that envelope, and hoping that we can put together a scenario that works for everyone. Monique, the heartfelt thanks, we go back to the trenches at least 10 years, and it's great to see this development, not only in buildings and structures, but in people and in yourself especially. Thank you, Monique.
Before we hear from Monique, I think we have a couple of the council members, Mr. Ridley Thomas, would like to be heard. There's a little bit of dispute who has the quickest finger, but delegation from CD-2 seems to imply that Wendy Gruel will be the first speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn and I are, you know, very cordial in our finding to push the button, but I want to stand up similarly and compliment Monique. We've had the opportunity to work together when I was in Mayor Bradley's office, when I was at HUD, when I was at DreamWorks, and now as a city council member, and saddened to see you leave Community of Friends, but your commitment, I know, will continue. And I have a story briefly to tell about when I was running for office and talked to Don Schultz, Mr. Ridley Thomas, who lives in the Van Nuys area, and he said to me, oftentimes we oppose any new developments, new apartment units, particularly in the Van Nuys area because they have been over-concentrated. And he said, there was a project by an organization called the Community of Friends, you happen to know them, and I said, I do, very well. He says, well, I decided that I was going to go look at their projects on the other side of the hill, and he said, I came back saying that that was one of the most well-managed, beautiful buildings that served a constituency and a need, not only on that side of the hill, but also here in the San Fernando Valley, and it is so much better than three crackhouses on the corner, and that the work and the outreach that Community of Friends has done has gotten my support of the Van Nuys Homeowners Association, which again was in a unique situation. So I just want to similarly compliment you for working with communities to improve those neighborhoods and providing a unique housing service for a population that desperately needs that kind of leadership. So we wish you well and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. Councilmember Hahn, to be followed by Councilmember Mizakowski.
Thank you. I just wanted to stand and offer my really debt of gratitude to Monique. You have really been such a key part of the Community of Friends and have been the leader, you've provided the leadership and the vision, and as, I don't forget which one of my colleagues said it, but you have to get consensus with the community, you said that, with the community, it sounded like something you would have said, Mark. Community, and also with the, with the elected officials, which I think in the past has been some, one of your most difficult challenges was getting consensus from some of the elected officials. But I want to stand here to say that it's your courage, really, that has made it so successful, because we all talk about affordable housing, we all talk about the need to create more housing, but you've taken even a more special constituency that we all serve, and of course, that's those who do have special needs. And, you know, sometimes I think if it wasn't for you and your compassion and your vision, a lot of those people would have really gone unserved by the most basic of human rights, which is housing. So I really want to thank you for that, and I know it was not always easy, and I know you many times had opposition, but I appreciate the fact that you were strong in your vision and in your leadership. So we wish you well in what you're going to do, and I'm sure whatever it is that you touch will become successful and will serve the people.
Very nicely said, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Mizakowski.
I was going to tell essentially the similar story to Wendy, because I was the person who represented the area in Van Nuys when you came in, and the story is, is, as Wendy said, very interesting, is that Community of Friends is a group that we hadn't heard about in the valley, and as is often the case when people come in and talk about a grand idea, a great idea, one sometimes is a bit skeptical about what it will really turn, how it will really turn out. Can it turn out? Can the vision, can the hope really be delivered? And when we were able to look at the real projects that you had, where you had planted the seed, and in fact, we show, it showed that it had not only been built well, but was maintained well, and also had the advantage of just uplifting the entire community in which it was placed, there was no question that anyone wouldn't just immediately support this, because those seeds are able to blossom and will continue to blossom with Community of Friends throughout the city, based on your good work, your great credibility, and you're really dealing with the, as Ms. Hahn said, a population that is perhaps sometimes the most difficult to serve and the most difficult to get consensus, but you have done it, you have done it in some of the toughest areas to get that consensus. But as I say, you have, I am certain, and the Community of Friends will have an open door in any community in the city because of that credibility, that work and that effort that you have already provided, and I just am hopeful that through our Housing Trust Fund and our other avenues available, our ability to go get bonds from the state, et cetera, that you are always first in line to get those because of that credibility, that capability, and serving an ever-growing population that is in need. So again, thank you, and best of wishes in your new endeavor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mizakowski. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
So it is for your courage, your smarts, your dedication, your compassion, now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend J. Monique Lachey for her meritorious contributions to a community of friends, the affordable housing community, and the City of Los Angeles. We extend to you our best wishes for continued success in all your endeavors, and this is on behalf of the entire Los Angeles City Council.
Mr. Labange? Would you like to be recognized?
Thank you to you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Saying thank you, Eric.
Would you like to have some words from the honoree?
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thank you so very much for all your kind words and the recognition of the hard work I've done and my staff at Community of Friends has done. It truly has been my honor and pleasure to serve the citizens of Los Angeles, particularly those who are most in need. I'd like to say for 10 years, which is two years longer than if executive directors had term limits, I've lasted, and despite all the hard work, it's so rewarding to see the housing produced, to have evidence of the work, and I hope that you will all continue to support a community of friends' work. We've done work in nine districts, so we have more work to do in the city, and that you all would continue to support the building of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the political will to get affordable housing done in the city. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. If there's no objection, members, Councilmember Zine is asked to take up item number three before we continue with the presentations. Without objection, let's take up item three. Mr. Zine?
Thank you for this brief interruption. I'd like to have item number three amended to read, authorize the Department General Services to negotiate and execute a lease up to $1.30 per square foot, and request that we approve item number three, which is a building lease for city personnel. Ask for an aye vote.
There's no objection to that. We'll take up the item as amended. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. That item is passed. We will return to presentations. Believe, okay, with Councilmember Reyes, next.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. Last year, I was honored to have assisted sponsoring a trip for 10 Nightingale Middle School students to travel to Sacramento to be part of Latina Action Day in Sacramento. Latina Action Day in Sacramento is produced by HOPE, which stands for Hispanas Organized for Political Equality. It's an annual event designed to educate Latinas on the political process through workshops, experience-based training, and inspirational speakers. The Sacramento Latina Action Day was originally launched in 1995 as an annual event to rally women, professional, civic, and community organizations. Through face-to-face meetings with the state's top policymakers, the participants from throughout the state are able to maximize their influence. The program provides the opportunities of networking, as well as the opportunity to begin involving themselves in current issues facing the respective communities. Well, it is my pleasure now that our Nightingale students are, were going to be attending. And as much as I would like to take the credit for this, the fact is that it was the idea of the counselors of Nightingale who began to raise the money in order to send our students to this conference. Their efforts made this trip possible. And colleagues, those of you who are listening, for me, this is special. I have a daughter who is 14 years of age, and I talk to her about leadership and what it takes to aspire for those things that can benefit the community, and it's important that our counselors at Nightingale demonstrate this kind of message and provide this environment for our young Latinas. They themselves become role models in schools that are highly populated, where to the point where we're busting our kids out, and these young ladies are demonstrating that leadership. They take that back to the classroom, to the hallways, in environments where too much you see negative influences dominating. And I know this because my wife, Martha, went to Nightingale, and she shared with me the stories about how she had to maneuver certain hallways and not go by certain parts of the playground because certain elements were there, and how it is a struggle to make sure you can stay focused on your studies. So it's with great heart that, and gratitude to know that, they had the opportunity to go and see something beyond what happens in Cypress Park and in Lincoln Heights. For me, the counselors are tremendous role models. They have been able to establish a sense of place and community and given a sense of hope for our young ladies. So I'd like to do is read the name of the students who I'll, we will be recognizing and give the certificates to the counselors, and don't worry, we'll give the certificates to you when we go back for pictures. But we have with us today, if you could just raise your hand, Karen Rodriguez, not here, Ruby Padilla, great, Valerie Cabrera, Jessica Navarro. Jessica Navarro. Jamie Padilla. May Lang Espinoza. Lucia Mata. Great. Kelly Rodriguez. Vanessa Para. Okay. Liana Fajardo. And Brenda Escobar. Some have made it and some have not, but I'm just glad the ones that are here got to experience the council as we work. I'd like to ask and provide a certificate to Cindy Cordova and Gabby Aguirre. But I also want to mention Sarah Figueroa from the University of San Francisco, who was the host of these young ladies up in Sacramento. And I want to thank her and the University of San Francisco for their support. Thank you. So without further ado, I'd like to call up Cindy Cordova. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Great. And where's our camera person? Okay, we'll get our pictures in the back. I understand we have a presentation for one of our young ladies?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamie Padilla. This year, 10 girls and I earned a four-day trip to be a part of Latina's, Latina Action Day in Sacramento. From the moment that I saw my name on the sheet with the names of the 10 girls that were going to the trip, I knew that I would have an incredible time and learning experience. April 15, 2002, we departed from Nightingale approximately 5:30 a.m. and headed our way to Santa Barbara. It was a long ride until we arrived to the University of California, Santa Barbara, but while, but while worth it. While we were there, we had a presentation of what classes to take while we were in high school. Next, we went to Stanford University where we had a tour of the campus. The campus was beautiful and the learning environment seemed peaceful. The following day, we went to Berkeley University and had a walking tour. This was the third university I had visited, and all these goals and ambitions came running through my mind and I'm sure in the minds of the other girls. After we left Berkeley, we headed to Sacramento. When we arrived, we went to a Latina Action Day workshop. The workshop was about the polit, about how politicians vote on laws, and it gave us an actual debate. The best thing about the workshop was realizing that we were the only middle school students attending to Latina Action Day gatherings. I specifically remember a senior in high school telling us how she wished her junior high would have done something like this for her. Later on that afternoon, we heard a panel of legislators discuss economic development, education, and healthcare. The discussion made me realize how much legislators are involved in not just the Hispanic communities, but in all communities. The highlight of that evening for me was going to Latina Leadership Dinner. After dinner, we heard Governor Gray Davis give a speech. I think Governor Davis has done a superb job as our governor, and after listening to his speech about himself, his growth, where he came from, and how he struggled to be where he is now, made me realize that I can achieve my goals. And who knows, I could be the first female Latino governor in California. The following morning, we went to a Latina Action Day breakfast, and afterwards, we went to a march and rally to the Capitol. Then we went to a different legislators' offices. I think meeting Jackie Goldberg was something I probably couldn't forget. She had to be, she has to be someone that I admire because I think she's someone that gives to our community, community, one, because she was a teacher, and two, by being a legislator. She put aside what she was doing just to meet us 10 girls from Nightingale Middle School. After that, we took a tour of San Francisco University. After dinner, we went back to, and yeah, after dinner, we went back to Los Angeles. On that long trip back, it made me realize how important education, communication, and politics are. Looking back at the four days, I realized how lucky I am to have this, to have had this opportunity. Up until that time, I had only read and seen pictures of these universities in my wildest dreams, but I could not imagine how beautiful and inspiring they are. I want to personally thank all the people that made this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With Cindy or Gabby, let's show a few words. Just one thing right before we start. We hope that if, on your way to the governor's mansion, that you stop here and serve in the Los Angeles City Council for some time. Please.
I'm sure they will. As, on behalf of Nightingale Middle School, I want to thank the council and especially Councilwoman Reyes for your support. I have been blessed to have a counselor like Mrs. Aguirre. As the Assistant Principal, I get tied up, just as many of you do, with the day-to-day routine, you know, parts of the job. To have counselors like Mrs. Aguirre who come and inspire our students, keep me motivated, get the other counselors motivated, and initiate programs like this is just great for me and great for the kids. We plan to continue this program with our, with our girls. As Jamie was saying, it was not only an inspiring trip for them, but for me as well. As the first Latina in my family to graduate from college and get a degree, both Mrs. Aguirre and I are role models for our kids. And we have more coming up. These are your future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The Chair would like to recognize Councilmember Perry for a presentation.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my pleasure today to introduce a man who's been helping his community, Central City East, for a long time and reaching out to so many of his neighbors who have been down and out since 1999. And this individual is Don P. Garza, standing here next to me. Don is a wonderful person, and since moving to downtown Los Angeles, he has been actively involved in his community council, has served on the city center project advisory committee, and was elected by the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council to be the town crier. He is known throughout the community for his charismatic personality and his caring ways through the people he has helped, including so many at SRO Housing. After serving his country in the Marine Corps in Operation Desert Storm, Don came to Los Angeles and has never stopped helping others who are less fortunate than he in the Skid Row community. He has been an inspiration to so many who are seeking access and a venue to voice their concerns and to get help and to have their issues addressed. He is a committed community activist and is always lobbying for greater connection between those who are poor, those who are in unfortunate situations, and those of us who are not. He reaches out across the board to developers, stakeholders, loft communities, Little Tokyo, all communities. Don has friends everywhere. He has sought measured and reasonable change for downtown Los Angeles and the Skid Row community that includes all people regardless of their race, creed, religion, or economic status. Additionally, Don has been a tremendous voice in raising the concerns of the community and cleaning up the community and highlighting issues regarding illegal activity, both in Central City East and in downtown in general. I want to take this time to thank Don for all that he does to help his community and his neighbors and to make our city a better place. And I believe that Don is a courageous role model we should all emulate. I would also like to introduce, before Don speaks today, Mr. Don Neismore from Downtown LA Life, a Hollywood Media One publication. And he is here today to present Don Garza with this year's Downtown Worker Award.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Don Neismore. I'm Vice President of Hollywood Media One and publisher of Downtown LA Life, our community service website for downtown. My family has been in Los Angeles since the mid-1880s, and I'm a proud resident of downtown Los Angeles. Today, I'm presenting the first Downtown Community Service Award on behalf of Downtown LA Life. There were many nominations for this award, and all were deserving, all exceptional people. Out of the many nominations was Don Garza, a voice which we have known at times to be harsh, critical, and loud, but which at no time has lost the vision for whom he spoke, the voiceless, the faceless, the fearful, the poor of Skid Row. And like Saul Alinsky, Don has given others a voice, a face, to which we many times don't care to hear or see. We wish them only to go away. Don, in 1999, came to Los Angeles from Texas for needed medical treatment. As a veteran of Desert Storm, he was suffering physical problems due to his service. But what happened next was extraordinary. Don moved to LA and due to his economic circumstances, became a resident of Skid Row, SRO. He saw the plight of Skid Row and the people who lived there and decided to make a difference. And he has. He became involved in local community action and many community organizations, as mentioned by Councilperson Perry and Delance. He has been a voice for morality, yes, morality, on Skid Row against drugs, the prostitution, and the illegal behavior he saw on Skid Row. Those without a voice now had one. Those that lived without a face were now seen. Those that felt powerless had strength of their limbs. And it was in no small part the voice of the man who yelled over the crowd, across the room, who did not know Robert's Rules of Order, who knew nothing of politics, and who cried when our mayor, Han, visited his hotel room. He has made a difference. In a city many times jaded with an ability to look through and past the desperately poor, Don has given us back a cachito of our soul by his cry for compassion for those in need. For indeed, Don has shown us, it is not what our intentions are, but what our actions are that truly matters. And so this man, this pariah to some, this fateful man of Skid Row to others, this son of the poor, a child of Rio Brazos in Texas, mi hermano, hermano de los pobres, has come here to Los Angeles to help so many others. And for this, we are grateful. And in our small way today, Hollywood Media One and Downtown LA Life offers Don P. Garza Jr. the Downtown Community Service Award.
I'd like to thank the City Council, and I, I think there's good cause why they elected me the town crier. I do a lot of crying. But one of the things that I want you to see here today is that when I started on this journey, it was me reaching out. But now, it's about us. Skid Row is no longer isolated from the rest of downtown because of the people behind me that helped me work and create and be a part of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. The homeless now have a board of directors on the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council with an elected representative. My community has an elected representative on the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. We, we, we can, we understand, working through this process, that downtown is the stakeholdership of all of Los Angeles and all of Los Angeles County. That's what we kind of figured out as we went through the process. It's kind of like everybody has a stake in downtown. But one of the most important things here is I just, I'm humbled, and I would just like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to work in this great city that I was so afraid of. But I see so many people that are my heroes here, like Mr. Ed Reyes. I see Mr. Nate Holden. And when I came and screamed that one day, and Tom Labonde was talking about a friend that had passed away and talked about teamwork, he put me back on the right track, the great cheerleader, I call him, of Los Angeles. But now, even the homeless and even the down and out have an equal, or we're going to try, to have an equal stakeholdership in this community. And instead of a clash between the classes as we work to make this mixed-income community downtown, we're going to sit down together at the table and we're going to work these issues out. And I am so grateful for having the opportunity to do this. And I'd like to thank Jan, and I'd like to thank Nick, and I'd just like to thank LA, period.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that inspirational speech, and congratulations very much. The Chair would now like to recognize Councilmembers Zine and Weiss for the next presentation. Congratulations.
Thank you for your nice words. I'm glad I was able to.
He's a good cheerleader.
That's good.
That's true.
Thank you. You're pretty special. An ex-Marine, too.
It's a great speech. Great speech.
Good job, everybody.
Congratulations.
I thought you were going to roll up on your head.
Gather close like the family. We are family. That's right.
Mr. President, colleagues, Councilmember Zine and I are here today with an extraordinary individual who also has an extraordinary story. The proximate reason we are here is to honor LAPD Officer Brian McClary from the Valley Traffic Division in recognition of his 1,000th DUI arrest. He has made 1,000 DUI arrests. And we're joined here by his captain, the great Captain Greg Meyer from Valley Traffic, as well as his parents, Lou and Judy. But I want to tell you a little bit about Officer McClary. It's an extraordinary story. He is a fifth-generation LAPD officer. His dad behind me was an LAPD detective for 25 years. Is that correct? Which is extraordinary. And his mom, Judy, was an LAPD Police Service Representative for 37 years. Is that extraordinary? And it doesn't end there. As I said, he is a fifth-generation LAPD officer. There has, has there been a McClary in the LAPD since when, 1900? Since 1901. There has, since, since before there was water, there has been an McClary in the LAPD. And his grandfather served as captain of the Hollywood Division, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Labonde, in the 1920s. This family has an extraordinary record of service to so many millions and millions of people. And Officer McClary has
And Officer McClary has done his family's legacy proud through his service in the LAPD and in particular, his focus on the area of DUIs. Let me just tell you some statistics. They are extraordinary. Last year, nationwide, over 17,000 people were killed in alcohol-related traffic crashes. And in California, of the 3,700 traffic fatalities, we had about 1,400 were alcohol-related. That's over a third of them. We all know that young drivers are more likely than others to be involved in alcohol-related injuries and fatalities. And so what Officer McClary does on a daily basis is protect our young people, protect the most vulnerable in our society, and really set an example for everybody in the community to follow and emulate. As his folks set for him, as their folks set for them, and so on, and so on, and so on. It is an unbelievable story. It's an unbelievable family. I know they're all very proud of you today, Officer McClary, and we are proud of you as well. Councilmember Zine would like to add a few words.
Thank you, Jack. And I'm honored to stand alongside my colleague, Councilmember Jack Weiss, to honor Brian, recognize him for his services. And when I was at Valley Traffic for six and a half years running the Deuce Watch, those are the hours where you show up at 3:00 o'clock, 4:00 o'clock, 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon and work till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, go to court, and it's a major sacrifice on the families. And Brian has done that consistently for not weeks or months, but for years. He's been consistent in that endeavor, making the Valley streets safe. He's now at 1,043. Since the resolution was completed, he's continued to make those arrests, to make the Valley streets safe. And if you look at the family tradition, what this family has done for public safety to the city of Los Angeles, that is obviously a family that's committed concern to the people of Los Angeles. And Captain Greg Meyer, the captain of Valley Traffic Division, who comes down here when we recognize his personnel, whether they're motor officers or collision investigators, he's a captain that motivates these officers to go out there and do that task every single day. So when we're enjoying the evening, it's 50 degrees outside and we're in our nice homes, snuggled up, watching TV, drinking hot chocolate like Tom Labonde does every night with the little marshmallows on top, Brian's out there making the streets safe for all of us. I'm sure Mothers Against Drunk Driving appreciate, we appreciate, and not only what you've done, Brian, but what you learned from your mom, from your dad. Your family has a tradition of public service, you're carrying that tradition. And I noticed by the ribbons that you have, and come on close here, we have a man who has been through the battles of Los Angeles, whether it be the Pope's visit, or the riots, or civil disobedience, or whatever the case may be, including some military time. Brian has been there as a defender of the people of Los Angeles. So I add my congratulations along with Councilmember Weiss and I'm sure our entire City Council. I see Councilmember Sikowski, the Chair of Public Safety there, just elated to see the recognition for Brian on this wonderful day. Congratulations, Brian.
Before we hear from Brian, we do have a council member who'd like to be heard. I also have had inquiries, Mr. Zine, wondering how many DUIs you had in your time. Not had, but actually were able to.
We'll address that at a later moment. We'll also learn in a later moment how Mr. Zine likes his hot chocolate.
Right. Mr. Labonde.
Hey, that was arrests I made, not the times I've been arrested, since I've never been arrested. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Absolutely. Mr. Labonde.
Mr. President, members of council, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Zine, and the McClary family. It's a wonderful story that was spoken this morning, of five generations, over 100 years. We are celebrating the centennial of the Department of Water and Power. So I'm sure your great-grandfather knew William Mulholland, because everybody knew Mulholland because he built this city. And the Los Angeles Police Department was part of that building of this city. But it's such a proud, outstanding record that you have. I've known your father for years, from 24 years that I worked at the Coliseum, at the NFL Films. And Lou was also the head of security for NFL and always making sure everything went right. So I'm just honored that Councilmember Weiss and Zine brought you for this recognition for what you're doing, is you're making people get home safe at night by taking those people who should not be driving and put them off the streets. So I just stand to salute you and thank you for your service, thank your family's service. And I bet your grandfather knew Thomas Lernerhand, my grandfather, who was acting sergeant for Metropolitan Division. They didn't let Catholics get past lieutenant back then when he was on the job, but that's another story. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to stand here. I've never been in this room before. I've been a policeman for a little over 15 years now. And much of the responsibility, how the ball got started, was by my mom. I was about 20 years old, I was unemployed, living off my mom and dad, staying up late night, watching television.
Eating choc, hot chocolate.
Drinking hot chocolate with marshmallows. And my mom came down, it was about 2:00 in the morning, turned off the television, and she sat down and she told me that I wasn't going to live my life like this and that I needed to have some direction in my life. So words were exchanged with my mom and I, and she got me started in the reserve program with the Los Angeles Police Department, just to see if I would like it. I loved it. It was a great, great job, it was a great career. I did it for free, that's what reserves do. I came on the job full-time and I had an instructor in the academy who told me, he said, "Find your niche in this, in your career and build on it." His name was Dick Haberland. He's now retired. We called him the Eagle. He was the bald eagle. Well, I kept those words with me and I worked narcotics. I liked narcotics, but I wasn't really good at it. I had two tours in Vice, Hollywood Vice, Fan Eye's Vice. I liked that, but that just wasn't my thing either. But I worked traffic here in downtown for three years and I worked traffic in the Valley now for a little over six. So nine years of my 15, 15 years of my career has been spent in traffic, working only at night, arresting only drunk drivers, and investigating traffic collisions, including fatalities. And it's what I like to do. So thank you so much, but it's, it's just my job. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like, with your indulgence, colleagues, we'd like to hear from Captain Meyer and then we'd like to hear from the senior McClary as well.
Thank you. Congratulations, Brian, and certainly thank you to Councilman Weiss and Councilman Zine. All the council members in the Valley are so supportive of our efforts in Valley Traffic to save lives and to suppress drunk driving. In fact, we have been very fortunate to have a backwards trend in the Valley. Drunk driving as a problem is going down because our arrests are going up, and that's counted a citywide, statewide, and nationwide statistics. It was very kind of my friend, Councilman Zine, to give me a little bit of the credit, but, and I appreciate that. But the truth is, the credit for these statistics going in our favor in the Valley goes to people like Brian McClary and his partners who totally believe in what they're doing out there, totally believe in the motto of Valley Traffic Division. And our motto is still saving lives. So thank you, Brian, and all of his partners, and again, thank you to the council for this great honor for, for a great police officer. It's now my pleasure to introduce for a few remarks Louis McClary, retired LAPD detective, current security representative for your Los Angeles Kings.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a little emotional. I wish his grandfather was here and my grandfather was here. This is an honor, and I can't thank you enough, Jack, for all the things that you've done. Dennis, I can't thank you. Tom Labonde, I can't thank you enough. Ladies and gentlemen, this is truly an honor for the McClary family, and my son has maintained it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to the McClary clan and for your great service to this city. And thank you, Councilmembers Weiss and Zine. That completes our presentations for today. If we can return to the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 17J, called special by Councilmember Holden for a substitute motion. The motion has been distributed.
Okay, we have the substitute motion, not seeing any need to speak on it, without objection.
I move it. I move the substitute motion.
Thank you very much. It is moved. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That item is passed. Next item, please.
Item number 20, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Councilmember Gruel.
There is a, the item before you today is relative to the Housing Trust Fund and the committee's report. They have been working diligently on those recommendations. And I know we're looking forward to their presentation and further dialogue on how we can utilize the Housing Trust Fund and how it will impact the rest of our housing plan and our strategy for the city of Los Angeles. And I want to commend and take this opportunity to commend the advisory committee who has been working so hard on this. I am putting this motion in to ask that we have a couple of public hearings, at minimum two public hearings in the community to get further input. This task force has not held public meetings. The idea is that we will now have those public hearings, one in the Valley, as well as, I think Councilmember Garcetti had interest in his district and others may as well. We do, however, want to make sure that we do it expeditiously so we can implement and utilize these funds as quickly as possible. I'd like to make a verbal amendment that moves that the Department of General Services' Special Events Section work with the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee in assisting with these public hearings as we move forward. So I know we are all in anticipation of the recommendations and look forward to working in each of your areas to get as much public input. We'll let you know when those hearings are being held so you too can send your representatives and people from your community. So if I'd just like to verbally amend the motion that is before you today.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gruel, and thank you for your leadership on taking that forward. With the amendment, seeing no other speakers, will we please open the roll on the item, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is passed.
Item number 22, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Sikowski, unless you have someone else to speak, staff, staff?
Staff was going to come forward. It's Mr. Deaton, I believe, and he is just getting out of a meeting that's breaking up, so if we can just hold this on the desk and take the other two items.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Mr. Holden? Hold it on the desk?
No, no.
You called it special. It's been suggested to hold it on the desk.
Of course.
All right, well, hold it on the desk then. Thank you for your acquiescence. If we can take the next item, please.
Next item is on the continuation agenda, item number 27, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
This was held over for the Police Department or someone to come in and speak to this issue. We had some questions that should be answered. City Attorney's made a, taken, made his position clear. They prosecuted a thousand of these people and they let them right back out on the street. Maybe they can.
Mr. Holden, can I ask you to press your button, please?
Oh, yes, you hold my time.
Thank you.
I'm Maureen Segal, Special Counsel for the City Attorney's Office. City Attorney prepared a report in response to questions which were raised by the council in the wake of Sheriff Baca's announced policy of early release, sentenced misdemeanances. There were three questions that were raised. The first was how many inmates were early released between June 21st and June 28th of this year. The second were how many stemmed from crimes occurring in the city of Los Angeles. The third was what's the impact on public safety. The answer to the first question was there were 544 inmates early released. And by that I mean that they served 70% of their sentences. There is attached correspondence from the Sheriff's Department indicating they could not delineate which of those inmates had committed crimes within the city boundaries. But for what it's worth, criminals don't necessarily honor the boundaries between the city and the county. And the impact on public safety is actually probably a more complex question because it's not simply the early release of sentenced misdemeanances that are at issue. Because the truth of the matter is that in past years, when Sheriff Block was sheriff, the early release policy has been to release inmates who served as little as 38% of their sentence. So for us, 70% isn't half bad. The overcrowding in the jails, for us, the real impact is for those individuals who never are held in custody pre-adjudication, so they're never brought in at all. They're released prior to their arraignment.
Say that again, huh?
Individuals who are arrested and then instead of being held in custody until the time of their arraignment, they don't reach the bail ceiling that's been set by the sheriff, which is 25,000 currently. So they're automatically released and given a letter to appear. Many, many, many of them simply fail to appear. So there's no consequence at all for the crime that they've committed.
And what are you proposing to do about it?
Well, I was asked the same question at committee and I said, essentially, there are three things that we can do. One, we can approach the Board of Supervisors and ask them to make budgetary adjustments for the sheriff. We can approach the sheriff and ask him to realign his budgetary priorities to allow for maintaining open jail facilities. And third, and here's where we control our own destiny, we can explore the possibility of reopening city jails, which over the course of the last decade or so, we've closed. I spoke briefly to Chief Pomeroy prior to writing this report, and he estimated there were approximately 400 beds available in city jail space that are currently not being utilized. That certainly would help us on, sort of take control of our own fate, but again, that's a very expensive proposition.
Now, have you talked to the sheriff about saying, what can you do to, I mean, you've got some suggestions, some recommendation. Has the sheriff department responded to those?
Well, the sheriff is in a, in a very difficult position. They've suffered a fairly significant budget cut and in response to their budget problems, they've closed two additional jail facilities, along with many, many other cuts to the department, including, I believe, their Family Violence Unit. So it's, it's really a matter of money and there's simply no room at the end. And it's been a problem for years. There are many, many issues that have occurred as a result of jail overcrowding. We've had home detention, electronic home monitoring, diversion, a whole lot of things that are intended to keep people out of the jails. There's a federal consent decree that puts a cap on the numbers of individuals who can be held in county jails. And our county jails are not just for sentenced misdemeanors, but for pre-adjudicated felons, for sentenced felons who are waiting transfer to state prison, for individuals with INS holds, and perhaps the tiniest percentage of all for sentenced misdemeanits and pre-adjudicated. So we're in a tough position when it comes to public safety, and it simply costs a lot of money to run the jails.
Mr. President, members, I would also urge that the council approve a sense of emotion to encourage the Sheriff Block, I mean Sheriff Baca, to keep the jails open for these convicted, criminal and convicted inmates.
Yes.
And we should probably direct the communication to the Board of Supervisors, pointing out the fact that in trying to keep our neighborhoods safe of the criminal activity, the City Attorney in this report states that he's prosecuted 100,000 misdemeanors, misdemeanors per year successfully, only to learn that many of them are back out on the street again, terrorizing the neighbors and the community. The community is upset about this. They don't know what they're upset about because they're not aware of this bureaucratic maneuver which permits these convicted inmates to be back out on the street again. So I would say that, Mr. President, members, that we accept the report, I think you're saying, receive and file, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
But at the same time that we adopt a sense of emotion to communicate, to be communicated to the Board of Supervisors, pointing out all of these problems that associated with early early release from our jails of those who've been convicted of committing some sort of a crime, misdemeanor or otherwise. And I saw move, and that should be presented to the Board of Supervisors by the city of Los Angeles. Do I get a second, I think?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Yeah, thank you.
So the item as amended with that suggestion, seeing no other speakers, Mr. Clerk, will we please open the roll on the item? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item as amended is approved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Item number 28, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number 28? Please press your speaker button.
Mr. President, members, once again, I'd like to have a report. I'll push my button, but it's blinking. On the flexible work schedule, I understand they want to take a year on that, but the fact of the matter is that we should have a report. We held it over for, for report, and if someone could come forward and give us a report on item number 28, I would appreciate it. Standpoint of cost savings, if any, what does it really represent, days off? There are a number of issues that I think you want to be discussing or look at.
Good morning, Commander Dan Koenig from the Police Department, Command Officer of Administrative Group. We were asked to prepare a report on the criteria for evaluating flexible work schedule. We submitted a report July 19th, I'm sorry, we submitted a report to the commission, which basically was the first one outlining the, a number of criteria for evaluating the flexible work schedule. The conclusion of the report basically is that it's way too early to come to any definitive decisions or conclusions on the flexible work schedule. We basically outlined the items that we'll be collecting data on and reporting through the commission on the implementation and its impacts.
I think that six months of the activity of this flexible work schedule program should be sufficient to provide some information as relates to overall continued hours earned, end of watch time, watch overtime, court overtime, sick time usage, compensatory time off usage, holiday out. You should be able to provide some data on this. If you think that it takes one year to come up with something that's more finalized and statistically accurate, that's fine, but you don't have anything to tell us, is what you're saying?
No, sir, the report was dated June 6th of 2002. It was the first report. There's additional reports coming up through the commission now, supplemental reports on.
This is dated July 26th, what I got in my hand, so proceed. This report is, but go on.
The one that we prepared to the commission was June 6th. The CAO also did a report.
All right. I don't have that, but go ahead.
So this was the first report that was done. There's additional reports coming.
Will you be, will you be prepared to have some more conclusive information regarding some numbers in the next report? Are you prepared to do that?
Absolutely.
When is the next report anticipated?
The next report should be into the commission within a couple of weeks. Basically the same categories, but obviously additional information.
And you'll have some numbers maybe by that time?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So then if it's next couple of weeks to the commission, maybe next three weeks to the council, would that be in order?
I, I can't tell you how quickly the commission will move, I would imagine they'll move it on fairly quickly.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Thank you for that presentation. If we can, seeing no other speakers, if we can open up the roll on this item, please? Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. I believe we have item 22 still on the desk?
You do.
Is there staff available now?
Mr. President, apparently there is going to be a request to continue, there are some issues that are being sorted out between MTA and the city attorney, so if we continue this just one day next month, next Tuesday.
Without objection, that item?
Well, next Tuesday is how many days?
One, one, one council working day.
One council day. Nobody's prepared to talk about it, we've been continuing this, continuing this? Mr. Deaton, you knew it was coming.
First day was on the agenda, Mr. Holden. This is just a one, continuation for one day. I don't think that'll, I don't think the contract or the RFP or the MTA will go away in the day.
I know, Mr. Deaton, you're aware of this. You advocated this merger, and you advocated the Police Department providing this kind of service.
Absolutely.
And the problems that were going to be associated with this.
Mr. Holden, if you'd like to speak on this item, will you just hit your button, please? Thank you very much.
The problems that we, you could see downstream associated with this merger was outlined to you and to the members of the council at that time, and now the chickens are coming home to roost. This is a real tragic situation for us to be in, Mr. Deaton, so please be prepared to give us some information next Tuesday on it.
I'll be pleased to do so.
This is going to cost the city millions of dollars. If we don't get that contract, we're anticipating at least 15 to 20 million dollars, and we have their personnel, MTA personnel, over here. You know that, don't you, is that correct?
Some of them are.
Well.
The ones that could pass our minimum requirements.
Well, they have some other problems too, but we.
Many of them were rejected, but we'll be happy to discuss that on Tuesday.
All right. Mr. Deaton, just goes as another clear example of what happens when, when you get those politicians making decisions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, for that insight, and thank you, Mr. Deaton, for taking one for the team. Can we please open the rolls on, oh, we're, sorry, we're continuing this item for one day without objection. Let us do that.
It'll be on October 22nd.
Thank you.
Not on the agenda is special one. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Perry, seconded by Mr. Weiss, and the City Attorney will speak to the need to make finding.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, members, this is a motion from Councilmember Perry. In order for the council to consider her motion, it's necessary that a finding be made on the record that under the provisions of the government code and the rules of the city council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need to take this action came to the attention of the city council subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Ms. Perry, would you like to speak on the findings?
Yeah, just very quickly, I'm attempting to make sure that the developer of this project has the opportunity to avail himself of the tax credits pursuant to the Mills Act, and the deadline for pursuing that is today.
If we can open the roll on the findings first, please? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Special one is now before us. Ms. Perry, would you like to add anything else? Okay. Without objection then on the item special one, if you please open the roll, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Also not on the agenda is special two. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Ridley Thomas, seconded by Councilmember Gruel, and City Attorney will speak to the need to make finding.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, members, this is a motion from Councilman Ridley Thomas. In order for the council to consider his motion, which would provide rental housing assistance, relocation, there is a need for a finding to be made that under the provisions of the government code and the city council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need to take the action came subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
Mr. Ridley Thomas on the findings?
Moving.
Okay. Findings are moved. Please open the roll, close the roll, and horseyly tabulate the votes, please.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. The item is now before us.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a matter that is of an urgent nature pursuant to notification from Housing of the need for relocation assistance and the sum of $5,000 pursuant to the tenant having been ordered to vacate the premises pursuant to building code violations are so extensive and of such a nature that immediate health and safety issues suggesting the endangerment of the residents cause us to move at this level of speed. I respectfully ask that we adopt this so that the Housing Department can do what they need to do to make sure relocation takes place for these residents.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. That item then is moved, and if you'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is also approved. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Now's the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Now's time for public comment on items not on the agenda but before the purview of council. Chair calls forward, sorry, Mr. Steve Fleischley first from Baykeeper.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcetti. Good to see you up there. My name is Steve Fleischley, I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Monica Baykeeper. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Baykeeper, Keel to Bay, and the Clean Water Alliance. With regard to one of the presentations today, I will agree that today is a truly historic day. October 18th, 1972 was when Congress overrode President Nixon's veto of the Clean Water Act, and the Clean Water Act became law. And we appreciate the efforts to celebrate that, and I certainly would never want to discourage the city of LA from embracing the Clean Water Act. It's a very important statute. But I don't want to leave the public with a misimpression of where the city of LA stands right now. The council, we have a very strong majority, excuse me, a strong minority on this council that are supportive of clean water, and I appreciate your efforts very much in that regard. I also want to thank Councilmember Jack Weiss for his thoughtful editorial today on the Daily News. I'd encourage people to check that out. I think it summarizes the issues very well. Unfortunately, though, we still have a majority on this council that are opposed to clean water. Right now, there are no less than five lawsuits and legal appeals that the city of LA is involved in, and certainly the city of LA is entitled to pursue its legal rights. If you are truly supportive of clean water, I would urge you to drop those appeals and let's spend our time moving forward to solve these problems rather than spending time on lawyers. With that, hopefully you'll all celebrate today with the Clean Water Act, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Steve. The Chair calls forward Mr. Mort Allen.
I just had to come and say this this morning. Tuesday night, we had this club meeting out in Shadow Hills, and I've lived in the Valley all my life, I grew up with horses, most of my friends have horse ranches. For the first time in my 40 years in business, it was, these people were meant to feel like something. And as a result, last night, there was a large meeting up at the Police Protector Lee Hat. There was 100 people there, and I think 99 were candidates. I mean, the public in the Valley, between some of the new people, what they're doing is, it's, that's what it takes. It was just wonderful, because these people really felt like something, and I think that it shows you what, what new blood can do in an area. I also have to thank Janus Hahn, because last Friday, we closed in Escrow on a $10 million site, the Boeing site in Harbor Great Wave. Clear Channel Communications is going to build their Western United States headquarters there. There'll be about 500 jobs, there'll be multimillions in taxes and everything, and through Genesis LA and through Janus, we were able to get them to not go to Long Beach, and it's, it's probably the biggest development thing in the city. They chose not to do press releases, they just want to build their building and do it. But I think that when we have council offices like Wendy's and Janus's that care about the people, that's really what it's at. Now, on the same vein, I want you all to think very carefully, you have a closed session item on Tuesday, and many of you know that George Maniac was let go at Clear Channel, that fellow owns Vista, has had a massive heart attack. There's all this pressure. Clear Channel has now sent their corporate staff out to run Los Angeles because of this, of the lawsuit. And all I ask is, the way Wendy went to the table with the community, nobody has ever taken the billboard industry to the table and said, "Let's sit down and work it out." Now you have their main office in Texas that's doing this multimillion dollar lawsuit, they, they feel that they have to win, otherwise it's going to affect them the whole country. And I only ask that before you start spending huge money on outside attorneys, you at least bring them into the table and say, "Let's compromise." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Next, we have the endowment candido.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Last week, there was so much excitement about the new chief of police, but there was something else that took place that was very exciting. And let me read, I don't have my glasses, so I apologize. The people of the city of Los Angeles do ordain as followed. It shall be unlawful for any person to be knowingly present as a spectator at an illegal motor vehicle speed contest or exhibition of speeds conducted on a public street or highway. Ladies and gentlemen, you don't know what you did here. Mrs. Gruel, thank you very, very much. Thank you, council. For many, many years, we've gone before the Police Commission, trying to do something about this. You wouldn't believe the amount of damage that has taken place in the Porter Ranch area, walls being destroyed, the parks being run into, because people would crash and spectators would help the drivers load their vehicles on these trucks and get them out there within minutes. But the worst part of it was watching children wrapped around poles that were speeding. And you don't know how many times we saw that, and that was a horrible sight. So I thank you, and I know that you get tired of me saying this, but part of being, part of the Valley is that it's part of the greatest city in the greatest country in the world, and you've made Los Angeles much safer. Thank you, Mrs. Gruel, council, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Candido. That finishes our public comment period. Do we have any other items?
There's motions for posting and referral. Please post and refer those. And requests for excuse from council attendants. Councilmember Miskowski is requested excused on November 8th for personal business, a motion is required.
Motion from Councilmember Gruel, seconded by Councilmember Hahn. Ms. Miskowski is excused.
And Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on October 23rd, which is the off-site meeting for city business, a motion is required.
Councilmember Weiss moves, and Councilmember Ridley Thomas, oh, sorry, Councilmember Holden seconds. He is excused.
And Councilmember Burns requests to be excused on Wednesday, October 23rd, the off-site meeting for personal business, a motion is required.
Okay, Councilmember Labange moves, and Councilmember Miskowski seconds. That excuses.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Now it's time for announcements, colleagues. Mr. Labange?
Mr. President and members of council, I'd like to ask us all to join and salute the Anaheim Angels, who originated in Los Angeles, who are representing, but the greatest thing in this World Series was the comment by the great former Dodger, Dusty Baker, now manager of those great San Francisco Giants, "We'll go down and we'll beat South LA," as they referenced the team from Orange County. But I think it's wonderful, because really in our city's history, the Los Angeles Angels started here, we're the city of the Angels. It's, the Lakers are from the Lakes of Minnesota, but they're greatly received here in Los Angeles. The Rams are now in St. Louis. The Anaheim Angels were birthed here, they carry the name of the Angels. So let's salute the Anaheim Angels and their great seasons, and also, I don't have all them committed to by heart, but four there are great team members, all have origins in the San Fernando Valley, either in high school. Two of them played at Montclair Prep together, on opposite teams, one for the Giants and one for the Angels. So I just wanted to ask us all to rise and salute the Anaheim Angels and wish them well in the series against the San Francisco Giants.
Ms. Gruel for announcement.
I just want to add to that, I spoke to Jackie Ocktree yesterday, and she is thrilled, she's a constituent of mine. She is thrilled and excited and told her, I told her that we were all behind her and that we still thought of the Angels as part of our family as well. I'd like to make an announcement. Tomorrow is the Commerce Avenue Street Fair in Sunland Tanga, and invite everyone to participate. It starts at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and will be most of the day, so encourage people to come out to Sunland Tanga. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Holden?
Just to add on to what Mr. Labange just said about the Angels and the Giants, both managers, Dusty Baker and Mike Socia, were members of the Dodgers, I think perhaps at the same time. So LA is involved, Los Angeles is involved in this World Series one way or another. And no matter which team should be successful, a manager who will have played for the Los Angeles Dodgers here in Los Angeles would have been victorious. So we are going to win no matter what.
Well put, Mr. Holden.
I think also we should salute Orange County for their greatness. Yeah, it's all right, they're having a great.
Is that a motion, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Mr. Deaton, they want to salute Orange County, is that all right?
Salute, salute Orange County.
I think that's been approved unanimously. Any other announcements, colleagues?
But they're all known as South LA.
Mr. Zion for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Tomorrow, the Posse in the West Valley will be hitting
Tomorrow, the posse in the West Valley will be hitting the streets with LAPD. So if you have abandoned cars, I suggest you get them off the streets tonight. And if you've got your street furniture out there, get it away because the posse is going to be on patrol in the West Valley starting at 9:00 AM tomorrow with LAPD cleaning up and improving that quality of life in that far west San Fernando Valley. Posse's in patrol.
Now, you shouldn't, you shouldn't scare people like that. I mean, there, there are people over here quivering, shaking, stop that.
Eddie, we're not hitting your district yet, we'll get there later.
Hey, you shouldn't be scared, you won't be in uniform. Any other announcements, colleagues? Okay, now will, the chamber please rise and join me for adjourning motions. Mr. Holden, is that an adjourning motion?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I'd like to announce that Ms. Blanche Naomi William Johnson recently passed away, was 90 years old at the time of her passing. Mrs. Johnson lived in Arizona, worked as a beautician and a sheriff deputy. Community activism was always her passion. She served on Arizona's Commission on the Status of Women and on the State's Beautification Commission. Her daughter, very active in my district in the city, Sue Beidelman, is a longtime resident of the Tenth District. So, as president members, we ask that we adjourn in her memory. Her husband of 64 years survives her, two sons and one daughter and numerous grandchildren and other relatives.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Anything else? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'd like to ask you to join me today in adjourning in memory of a really great elected official whom I always wanted to meet, I never had the chance to meet him. His name was Bill Green and he was a congressman from Manhattan for several years. And he was really an interesting breed, and I say this to my friend, Mr. Zin, there used to be a breed called the Rockefeller Republican, very, very, very liberal progressive Republicans. And it's a breed that has unfortunately all but died out in the United States House of Representatives due to several reasons. But he was, he was one of the great ones and he was in this great seat in Manhattan where he'd succeeded John Lindsay and then Ed Koch and he ran in a very closely contested race against Bella Abzug, which was, it wasn't a partisan race. I mean, it was, it was a liberal Republican against a liberal Democrat. And he did wonderful things for gay rights, for the environment, for the city of New York. And he was one of these very few Republicans that you see whom are surrounded by Democrats. Like Mayor Reardon was here, where everyone who's working for them is a Democrat. He was very progressive, a very wonderful, learned man and he passed away this week.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I hope we all have a good weekend. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you can call the roll. This meeting is adjourned.